Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Trustees, Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 18, 2019. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call for us.
Trustee South.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Diza.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Morris.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. Not present this evening is Trustee Hannan.
Thank you very much. If you'll join us for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you to everyone who is here tonight and those of you watching from home. If you are here and you would like to make a comment to the board at any time, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can see and hear what you have to say. You're welcome to speak during public comment or you're welcome to speak at any time during the meeting when we get to a particular agenda item that you would like to comment upon. First up, is public comment? Would anyone like to address the board at this point? Yes, sir, please.
My name is Jim Petraselka and I'm with the Riverside Historical Commission. I would like to give the village board an update on the human skeletal remains that were dug up in Riverside in September of 2017. This was at a depth of six feet during a sewer project, at the bottom of a sewer project trench in front of 187 Blooming Bank Road. This occurrence is not unusual in Riverside. Since the first settlement of the area by Europeans, this has been a recurring event. And both Native American and early settler burial grounds have been documented in the first division of Riverside. Also, it is believed that some federal soldiers, cholera victims, from the 1832 Black Hawk Indian War were buried in the same area. In this instance, and per applicable law, the police were called, they secured the area, and several archaeologists were detailed to perform additional excavations in the trench. All the remains and any possible associated materials were subsequently turned over to the Cook County Medical Examiner. The medical examiner's office turned the remains over to a forensic anthropologist at Northwestern University for analysis. After completion of this analysis and a brief possession of the bones by the Army Corps of Engineers, who maintained jurisdiction along the river where they were found, the medical examiner's office contacted the Riverside Historical Commission, inquiring as to our interest in acquiring the bones. Pending further investigation and disposition, the Riverside Historical Commission agreed to do so. So now we have the bones. The next question is where do we go from here? First, we would like to share our findings with the community, as we are doing here, but in a larger forum if possible. Since the discovery of these remains generated so much community and media interest, we in the Historical Commission believe we owe it to the community for an explanation of what has occurred and perhaps a history lesson on what has, a history lesson on what has occurred in the past, so as to put the event in context. It is a fascinating story, a detective story, really. We believe a town meeting with a respectful viewing of the remains is warranted. That was first. Second, we would like to solicit the community's help on possible further tests because our own subsequent investigations have been frustrating. The analysis we have is thorough, but unfortunately, the broken, fragmented remains, nature of the remains and the lack of any associated artifacts, save one button found near the top of the trench, made a determination as to age of burial and ethnicity impossible. They are most likely an adult male. Burial can only be scientifically determined as in excess of one year, believe it or not. DNA analysis of the bones themselves would be contaminated by their broken nature, even though they represent almost all the major areas of the body. The only possible DNA might be extracted from three teeth attached to a portion of the front lower jaw. We have not yet found any entity or lab that might even quote us an estimate for this work. We have asked for advice or leads on this score from everyone involved and have not been successful. Third, and finally, of course, the final disposition of the bones. There is a statute 20 ILCS 3440, which is labeled the Human Skeletal Remains Protection Act, is the governing statute. This mandates that remains of this nature determined to be in excess of 100 years old must be turned over to the Illinois State Museum Research and Collection Center in Springfield. We have been in contact with the chief archaeologist of this facility, which already houses some earlier Riverside burials, and they are eager to take possession. We believe if a town meeting is held, we should invite the chief archaeologist to Riverside as part of the presentation. We would like the village board, or we would like the village board's approval for this process to move forward. That's all I have right now.
So when you say you'd like our approval for the process, what process to move forward? The identification, further identification of the remains?
Yeah, mainly to share this with the community, I think. We have many professional people in town, maybe some of them, including medical people. We might get some leads on how we might proceed with DNA analysis. That's a possibility. We've tried. I've contacted the field museum, they have a DNA lab, several universities, asked for advice from the medical examiner, you know, several other contacts. Nobody seems to really want to step forward. I think when they do forensic analysis, they're looking for crime scene kind of evidence, you know, more recent type of things. There isn't a lot of interest, apparently, in this type of material.
And I think, I think you're right, in terms of a teaching opportunity, especially for the younger people here in town, and also for a lot of adults who don't really know a lot about the history of Riverside, this would be a great opportunity to talk more about that. Does the board have any objection to him working with staff to see if we can set up an appropriate forum for this? We'll be in touch with you. Village manager will be in touch with you, and we'll talk with the Historical Society Division about how to move forward on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, sir, please.
My name's Jim Sullivan. I live in the village, been here for over 30 years. And I just want to find out, I was out of town last week when, or at the previous board meeting, and I was just asking what the board intends to do about this flag issue. What is to be the threshold at which you agree to fly a flag beneath the United States' flag? It seems like it's a two-person committee that came to y'all and petitioned our board to get their way. Were they even village residents? I don't, did anybody ask them?
I'm not sure quite what you're talking about.
Were the people that came to petition for the gay flag even village residents? Because, I mean, they came here to petition our board, and then they've used the time-honored critique or whatever. If they weren't, how can they speak for us? It seems to me that they employed the tired tactic of, if you don't, we will label you as homophobic, racist, et cetera. And of course, what happened on social media. This is wrong and a slap in the face to those of us in the village. I know, President Sells, you wrote a quote in the, that appeared in the landmark, and I think it, and the quote, I think it is universally recognized as a symbol of equal protection under the law, equality, fairness, decency, all of which are the ideals that make Riverside such a special place. I think what represents the village and everything else, and all-inclusive of all of those, would be the United States' flag. As it was brought up and the flag code was written by the American Legion in 1923. Red stands for valor and bravery, white for purity and innocence, and blue for vigilance, perseverance, and justice. That's what's beautiful about this country, and the men and women who have worn it on their uniforms as they fought under it and eventually go to their rest under it. No flag but the POW flag, per the US federal regulations or guidelines, belongs with our national emblem. If we're going to be inclusive, then you can, I think you can stand by for a lot of multiple requests for organizational flags. And I'll give you a couple of examples. In November, why can't the organizational flag of the Marine Corps be flown for the entire month? An organization much more inclusive that preserves the rights of this country and for everyone to say what they want to say, just as they had their flag here. Or go the other direction. In March, the Irish flag, the Italians, the Germans, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think if we're going to do anything to alleviate this problem, put a flagpole up somewhere else. Let everybody come petition you, establish rules for the petition, and how they can get, you can get a flag flown here. Otherwise, I think you're going to have everybody coming here month after month petitioning you for, you know, their flag or anything else. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Tom Sisalak, Riverside resident. And I'm here tonight to focus on, as Sully mentioned, Riverside flagpoles and flags. First of all, the Gold Star Memorial Flagpole in Guthrie Park has recently been sanded and repainted as part of the renovation project. Looks beautiful. The American flag on that flagpole is a symbol of freedom, which the Riverside 54 fought and died for during World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. The American flag should be the only flag on that flagpole. It is a symbol of respect and honor to the Riverside 54 who gave their lives for our freedom. Once again, it should be the only flag to be in the sacred Gold Star Memorial. Secondly, the flagpole and American flag located here in front of the Township Hall is also the same symbol of America's freedom. In my opinion, the American flag should also be the only flag on that flagpole. Therefore, to accommodate the request to fly organizational flags in front of Township Hall, I would like to recommend that the Village of Riverside purchase and install two new additional flagpoles. Locate the two new flagpoles on the right side and the left side of the existing American flagpole. Organization flags can then be flown on their own separate flagpole. The additional flags could be representative of the Riverside flag, the Illinois flag, the POW flag, the Centennial American Legion flag, Gold Star Mother's flag, and others. The two new flagpoles, if they are approved, which would be great, need to be about one to two feet shorter than the existing American flagpole. They can be purchased, or as the flagpole in Guthrie Park, they can be welded steel and also have the traditional hand-raised flag cord. Thirdly, if the village trustees would like to add some color and new excitement to the Village of Riverside, the new raised stone flower bed on the east side of the train station would be a great location for three new flagpoles. The train station would be a way to greet and welcome daily commuters, visitors to Riverside, seeing three new flags, three new flagpoles. Each flagpole itself would only take about one square foot of land and wouldn't disrupt future plantings. Once again, the three new flagpoles could display the Riverside flag, the Illinois flag, the POW flag, Centennial American Legion flag, or many others. These would add, as I mentioned, color, new excitement. It's a great location. Hundreds and hundreds of commuters and visitors would be welcomed by those flags, and the flags could be changed periodically according to the request. However, in the meantime, I would like to suggest that the POW flag and the Centennial American Legion flag be flown under the American flag here on the flagpole in front of Village Hall, as you probably read in a letter that was sent about three weeks ago. Any questions on those ideas, suggestions?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Rob Dixon, 478 UofA Road. I'm the committee chair for the House Walk and Hop Stop Festival that's coming up, September 28th. We have an item in front of the board tonight for approval of space in the village, and just wanted to describe the event a little bit, see if there are any questions, I can answer them. This is our fifth annual running of this event, and we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a little different this year in that the Olmstead Society is coordinating a house walk. It's going to be probably one of the most fantastic house walks held. It's going to include places like the Shermer Horn House, the Free Ark Home, aspects of the Coonley Estate, the bedroom wing, which many people have not, probably been through in many, many years, and it's been beautifully restored. That house walk portion is going to run from 12 to 4:00, and then the craft beer festival is going to be from 4:00 to 7:00. And we have Riverside resident Dr. Don, who will be bringing the boogie monsters. And there will be other music, some surprises. We have some more things for kids, because it is a kid-friendly event, and there'll be some, some diversions for kids and kids of all ages who will enjoy this. There'll be over 22 brewers coming this year. Peter Buchikakis, we partner with Riverside Foods on this, and his efforts are bearing great fruit this year. There's going to be some cideries. Also, some non-alcoholic distillers and brewers are going to be bringing some goods. So I think it'll be a great time, and I appreciate the village's support for this fundraiser. It's been a critical aspect of keeping landscape work. Many of the good works the Olmstead Society does, educational programs. In many cases, we're bringing in speakers, and there's some stipends, and this has been a way for us to continue all those programs. So I wanted to thank the board for the past support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on now, next to reports of village officers, I do not have a report this evening. Manager Francis.
I don't have a report this evening.
So move on to the approval of the consent agenda, agenda? On the agenda this evening, ratify the voucher list of bills for July 5th, 2019. Approve the voucher list of bills for July 18, 2019. Approve the village board of trustees' regular meeting minutes of June 20. Review and file the following, the Historical Commission meeting minutes of May 20. Planning and zoning meeting minutes of April 24. Community Development Department, June 2019, monthly report. The Finance Department, May and June 2019, monthly reports. The Fire Department, June 19, monthly report. And the Fire Department, Police Department, June 2019, monthly report. Also, a motion to approve a special event application for Corey's Kids Triathlon to be held in Riverside on August 10th. Motion to approve a special event application for Hop Stop 2019 to be held on Saturday, August 28th.
Judge, for instance, on that, President Sells?
Yes.
September 28th.
September 28th. Thank you very much. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. A resolution approving the Illinois Department of Transportation's local agency agreement for federal participation with the Village of Riverside for the Phase 1 engineering of Quincy Street Skate Project. And lastly, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding by and between the Village of Riverside and the Regional Transportation Authority for the Riverside zoning code update. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion? I may not ask for a motion, a second to approve.
Motion being granted, depending on the question of the date.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second.
Second.
By Ms. Peters, please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Diza.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, our reports of departments, permissions, and trustee liaisons, are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to Chief Weitzel, who's going to update us on the Youth Outreach Services partnership. Chief Weitzel.
President Sells, trustees, manager Francis, I just wanted to update you quickly on this new agreement we entered, because we, as a police agency, we've never had an agreement like this before. So we've actually entered into a governmental agreement or a memorandum of understanding with Youth Outreach Services, and this is going to be a 24-hour service for us, which we haven't had before, and it is grant-funded, so it's not costing the village any dollars. While Youth Outreach Service does get some state funding, and there even is some federal funding, they were able to extend, extend their program because of their recent grant funding. And I'd just like to read a little bit of what we're getting, which we never had before. So there's going to be in-school substance abuse available for the officers to refer to, behavioral health services, daytime manning, which means they're daytime services, and then there's going to be 24-hour services, which is, we've never had. There's going to be in-school teen pregnancy referrals, family therapy referral. We're going to have summer youth program referrals, re-entry referral, family wellness referrals. So what this means is the officers will have a number now, 24 hours a day, that they can call to the service, explain to them the situation we have, and they, our contract with them says that they will respond within one hour if they're needed to the police station for such thing as lockouts. And what a lockout is, is maybe a juvenile, for whatever reason, is either put out by their parents, or their parents won't take them back, but they're still a juvenile, they're 12, 13, 14. And we'd either have to get DCFS involved before, which isn't really the best route to go, or try to negotiate with the parents on our own to find a relative to take these juveniles if the parents would not let them back in the home. Now, it is unlawful to do that, but for us to try to arrest the parents for that is problematic, it's really not something the court system wants to see unless it's really aggravated. So this will allow them to do placement fours, it'll allow them to do family counseling, and it'll allow an individual to respond to the police department and work with the officers. So before, we really couldn't do anything after hours except for reach out to DCFS, and anybody that's dealt with them knows that that's a difficult process. Sometimes it's a 24-hour response. So there are many agencies that have entered this, but this is our first time for doing that. And while I'm up here at the podium, I just want to happen to mention that, as it is of today, I entered an agreement with Autism Speaks. So Autism Speaks is going to train our entire department as part of a grant funding. We're teaming up with the Village of North Riverside's Police and Fire Department for public safety, and it's going to be offered to our fire department, where Autism Speaks is going to come in and they're going to train the entire department on how we can better handle basically adults with autism when we get called by families to assist them in response. Because lately, it's been just this vicious circle of us transporting somebody with autism to an emergency room, and they really don't have a medical condition, but we don't know what to do with them. And we get them to the hospital, and the hospital just recycles them and sends them out, because they're not there for a medical reason, they have no cuts and bruises, they weren't injured. They just may have been a little aggressive when they're with their family members, so the only choice we had was to get them medically evaluated. So when we sat down with the hospital administrators over the last couple of months, they're the ones that put us onto Autism Speaks. North Riverside has allowed us to use their facility, training facility, so that'll be taking place within the next 90 days. So those are two new programs that are grant-funded, and the village will be paying nothing for that, and the officers will be getting the benefit, including in the autism, our firefighters and North Riverside firefighters.
Any questions, Chief? Thank you, Chief. As always, your continuing innovation and leadership, we appreciate it. Those sounds like, they're both great programs. We'll move on now to ordinances and resolutions. First up is a resolution amending Section 1.10 of the Village of Riverside Employee Manual relative to business hours. Director Johnson.
Good evening. Before you is a resolution amending business hours for village offices to 8 to 4:30, previously 8 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and Saturday hours in June to be at the village manager's discretion.
So any questions about this? I'd ask for a motion, a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Mr. Pollak. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Diza.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are considerations, and first is a discussion of the recognition of the American Legion Centennial and the POW MIA Recognition Day. We have been notified by the American Legion that this year is the 100th anniversary of the American Legion. They received their Congressional Charter on September 4th, 100 years ago this year. So they brought this to our attention, as you might recall, and just to clarify something that was said a little bit earlier, the village is not in the business of accepting requests to fly flags from organizations or individuals. However, as a village government, we have the capability and the right to express our own governmental free speech. So if we think there are certain things and events and groups that deserve recognition on our own volition, the village board has the authority to do so. So what this is about is whether or not at the next meeting, we would like to have a resolution drafted recognizing the 100th anniversary of the American Legion and also in honor of the POW MI Recognition Day. And if, as part of that resolution, the board would like to entertain the idea of flying the appropriate flags for those different occasions. So that's the, that's the issue before you. So I turn it over to you. Are there motions or discussion? Just discussion.
I would like to have the 100th flag flown the entire month of September outside of Village Hall, and then for the POW MIA flag flown the entire month of November, also outside of Village Hall.
Well, September 20th is the recognition day for POW MIA.
Why not have it all month?
Today, is that what they requested?
Nobody's requested anything else from, with regard to POW MIA.
I think we should take the opportunity to honor our vets by flying the flag on September 20th. I just, I know you said that you would prefer that it flies in front of the village building, but I mean, I just wanted to point out that the Guthrie Park flag is, has much more exposure. But wherever you would want to fly, it would be fine with me. But I do think we should take the opportunity to honor the vets on that day.
Well, one option, I guess, would be to fly the American Legion flag on the Township Pole and the POW MI flag on the Guthrie Park pole.
I believe the Legion did not want any flag flown on the Guthrie Park flagpole.
So the decision of what flags we'll fly in the village belonged to this board? With input from them, but it's your decision to make.
Yeah, I like to respect the people who elected to fly, so nothing goes against that, well.
Other comments? Mr. Pollak?
Just want to clarify, you know, as, at the last meeting when we talked about the pride flag, the big concern was precedent and our ability to say yes or say no to various organizations and various issues that come before us. And what is our level of discretion? I would just like the village attorney to comment on whether this falls into that same category of government free speech, where we have discretion to say yes to this, which I feel everyone wants to say yes to this, but that we're not setting a precedent where maybe a type of flag or an issue that we don't agree with may be requested of us.
Mr. Morris?
Thank you. I think President Sells captured it well. You, the village is not saying we're open, open for business, bring us your flags and your requests. It's an expression, as, as the board said at the last meeting, flying the pride flag was a decision the board made consistent with its previously adopted resolution concerning inclusiveness and diversity, and this is along those same lines. You're making a decision, hey, it's come to our attention that this is the 100th anniversary. Would we like to recognize that event through a resolution, which you do all the time, whether you're flying a flag or not, for various events? And associated with that, go ahead and indicate as part of that honor, flying the flag. And, and that is not creating precedent because you're exercising your rights of governmental free speech.
Thank you. Anything over here?
I, I do like the concept of further exploring where to fly.
I do like the concept of further exploring where to fly these flags if we are going to fly flags and make, you know, you express our free speech here. I'm not comfortable with putting it on the Guthrie Memorial Flag Pole, anything on there other than just the American flag. So, if we have multiple flags, which this is what I think here, we have two flags that would be, at least for September 20th, if I'm doing the math correctly. I don't know if you can fly two flags on a flag pole, I don't know, three flags on a flag pole, I don't know how that works. But I would want to consider, like it or not, this mode of expressing our free speech while we do it in other ways as well with resolutions, this is going to continue to be something that we're going to have to deal with. So, I think we need to have a place to express our free speech in a location that maybe doesn't conflict with the values that people hold with regard to the American flag.
So, I would agree that we should not fly in Guthrie Park. I'm all for drafting a resolution to fly the flag pole in front of town hall, obviously. I think it's a matter of when we want to fly it and how many days. Maybe some input from the American Legion would be helpful. But I agree with Liz that, you know, whether it's additional flag poles that are shorter than the American flag pole in front, finding out what the cost after those would be nice to understand, or identifying a location, you know, as people drive through Riverside seeing us recognizing things that the community believes in would be powerful.
How about this as a compromise? How about if we hoisted the American Legion flag on the 4th, which is their anniversary day, and flew it for two weeks? And then we hoist it, take that down and then hoist the POW MIA flag on the 20th and fly that for two weeks?
I would be comfortable with that.
Does that sound like a reasonable? Any comments from the folks here?
That would be on the village.
On the village. We would not fly anything other than the American flag in Guthrie Park.
What would be the amounts to put two new flag poles in?
We have no idea, we just.
That would settle everything.
Well, we don't have time to do that between now and September, I doubt.
We can explore.
We certainly.
I want to explore it.
We'll look into it, yeah. Trustee Hannan has arrived, so he is displacing Mr. Mar's. Yeah, we can certainly look into that as a future consideration. So, does that sound like it to everyone? Yes, okay. All right. Next up is a discussion of limited tax debt issuance options. Director Johns. Could we ask those folks out there to quiet down, please?
Good evening. Every two years, the village issues the maximum for limited tax debt allowed by state statute. For the past 20 years, the village has obligated this revenue derived to pay off the public works facility. At the end of this year, the village has the opportunity to issue 1.5 million of limited tax debt, of which 550,000 is needed to finish paying off the loans for the public works facility. Tonight, I'm looking for a direction on the amount that the board would like to issue later this year if they'd like to seek the maximum of the 1.5 million. This will keep the property tax rate stable for residents.
Questions from Director Johns? Mr. Pollak?
Can you tell everyone what limited tax debt means, what that is?
Yes, it's bonds that the village would issue that are outside the tax cap.
So, it's borrowing money?
It's borrowing money.
And to just add on, it's money that we've borrowed every two years consistently. And so, that part within the property tax bill has remained flat and it's part of our repayment for the public works facility.
So, the balance of the 1.5, if we were to go for the 1.5, the balance of the 1.5 minus the 550 that we need to pay off the public works department, that could be used for what purposes?
Could be used for, as part of the capital improvement plan. One of the projects that staff has identified as a large need for the village is the repaving of Selborn. So, if the board wanted to use those funds along with the 200,000 from the capital grant for road improvements, that almost covers the Selborn Road Repaving Project.
So, I believe our Selborn is right in the $1 million range, correct?
I think with engineering, it was around 1.3.
1.3, okay. And it's in dire need, as I think a lot of people.
And if there is direction by the village board to move down this path, then we would begin engineering this year so then everything's localized and ready as spring of 2020 to then to start the repaving and get it done before any community events and things of that sort.
So, what do you think?
I still don't know if I'm the only one that's not getting it or if everyone else is afraid to ask questions. So, did we have a tax levy for the public works building that allowed us to borrow money to build the public works building? And so, we have a property tax levy that's paying for that? And we have more than we need for the public works building? And that's the increment that we have to spend?
So, I'm going to try to do this at a very high level and not get caught up in the minutia, but we issued debt for the public works facility for a 20-year cycle.
And there was a referendum for that?
No. That, then debt was backed by our limited tax debt, saying we would reissue, we would issue those monies to pay off public works. And so, then those monies, which are outside of the tax caps, were then levied. So, there wasn't a referendum with regard to the public works facility. So, this is money that the village has always had. We've just reissued it every few years to pay off the debt associated with the public works facility.
Where does the revenue come to pay that debt?
Where does the revenue come to pay? It's levied, it's a limited tax debt, it's a line item within our tax levy. It's always been outside of the tax caps since they were implemented.
So, if we go forward with this, I think what most people want to know is how it's going to affect their tax bill.
It would remain.
So, just want to confirm that for everyone. Yes.
And we would be playing some much-needed catch-up with our streets.
Yeah, well, I think Selborn, well, Selborn's a very long road in dire need of repair from end to end. There's a lot of residents that use the street. It's cracked, bumpy, and beyond repair in several places. Residents have been very vocal about wanting the village to address it. So, I definitely think that we should make, take this opportunity and use it with the road improvement grant to fix the street.
And as Manager Francis says, if we approve this tonight, we can get started on the engineering. So, we'll be ready for the next construction season to get it done early, which we need to do. So, we all agree, it looks like. Yes, Mr. Pollak?
So, getting to what we spend it for, have our engineers done enough research or done enough surveying to know that Selborn is the one most in need?
Yes, there's consensus with them and our public works director.
Okay, so the answer is yes.
Okay, the second part to the question. Do we want this limited tax debt to directly pay to repave Selborn? Or do we want to loan it to the non-home rule revenue? We collect approximately 200,000 of non-home rule sales tax each year, which goes towards road improvements. We could allow that to go negative and repay it with the offsetting balance of this bond issuance. The board can elect just to use the grant funds to pay for Selborn and let non-home rule sales tax continue to grow for other projects. They could elect to offset it 50% or offset it 100%.
But we're going to need that to meet the 1.3 anyway, aren't we?
We're going to need it to meet the 1.3. But if we wanted to repay that back over the next five years with the revenue derived from the non-home rule sales tax, we could.
So, as Finance Director, what do you think's the better option from a financial standpoint for the village?
It really depends on the board's priorities and the CIP or the capital improvement plan with how they want to structure future capital planning.
So, I'll answer that question. Because Director Johns gave the very accurate statement. I would suggest that we do it and not do repayment and build up those funds because we're continuously behind the curve with resurfacing, with our rejuvenation program, with our crack ceiling, and it's just this ongoing vicious cycle. And even if we do issue bonds, as we've done with the referendos previously, we're still behind.
So, if we do that, though, we're still short for the 1.3 we need for Selborn?
Yes.
So, where do we get the balance for that?
So, we will either supplement that with MFT or potentially non-home rule sales tax.
There's also the 200,000 grand for capital improvement.
From the capital plan?
In the capital plan, there's a 200,000 grand, sorry, for road improvements.
That are represented by Scott Forrest at Springfield.
Uh huh.
Yes. So, is that satisfactory with everyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanted to confirm with Manager Francis is I have been told that our MFT funding allocation for this year could go up by approximately $12 per capita. Have you heard that?
I've seen.
Due to the gasoline tax?
I've seen different information. I usually try to be very, as you well know, conservative. I wait till we have most of the money in hand before we start spending it. And so, I'd like to build those funds back up because the larger projects are easier to bid out and get really competitive bids back from different contractors. And so, that's the approach I'd like to continue doing in the future.
Thank you.
Do you have anything on this, Mr. Jan?
I am encouraged that there's a commitment to address the Selborn Road issue. The one thing I do get questioned about since election has been, do we know about the situation in Selborn Road? So, I'm very excited that, you know, this is a commitment to those residents, that there is a fix. It's recognized as an urgent situation and, you know, they're first in line next construction season. So, if this allows us to do this, I think it's a great idea.
It's been a source of great frustration to our public works department and all of us that we haven't been able to do Selborn yet, but we'll get to it next year. Okay. Thank you, Director Johns.
Next up is a discussion regarding additional business districts on Harlem Avenue and Ogden Avenue. Manager Francis?
So, back in April 2016, so over three years ago, we began the discussion about our first business district, which we established thereafter on December 2016, which is the Harlem Avenue Business District in which the village does own property, which is 2710 South Harlem. And the purpose of creating that business district was to allow for different economic incentives while also looking at ways to beautify the area and come up with a revenue stream to do so. So, after we did establish that business district, we did implement the 1% business district tax. In reviewing different items with staff, we still noticed that there is potential on Harlem Avenue for economic development. And before economic development really starts to happen, we would like to capture this opportunity to review the potential for business district and then also evaluate whether or not we would want to assess the additional 1% and that 1% would then be utilized to be reinvested in those particular areas. Included in the packet are a couple of different maps that Director Act at my direction put together for the village board. One is potential Harlem Avenue Business District Number Two, which, as you, begins just north of Addison Road and then extends down past the, south of the railroad tracks. And then secondarily is Harlem Avenue, the potential Harlem Avenue Business District Number Three, which begins on Harlem Avenue and kind of creates an L onto Ogden. These areas we've targeted as being great potential for development based on their size, based on the different things that are happening with regard to Harlem Avenue pace, viewing Harlem for the potential pulse line in the future and then doing various reviews with CMAP to figure out how to best move traffic. I think it's a great opportunity right now to evaluate it. We've seen the Harlem Avenue Business District Number One and the Small Strip Center has filled, is filled. But we also would like to look at utilizing those funds and the greater potential for economic development to reinvest. And there are various items you can invest those monies in, in business districts if we choose to go down that path. But obviously, before we even start there, I need to know whether or not the board would like to evaluate additional business districts. So, that's first and foremost. If so, staff will go out and get proposals from different firms and then we would come back with a recommendation and they go from there. Because we cannot establish a business district until we have the evaluation from the consultant stating that it meets the criteria as required for a business district. Then thereafter, we would then do various public hearings and meetings and notifications to those that would be impacted in those areas. And then after that, if a business district plan is then accepted by the board, then we would evaluate whether or not we'd want to assess a 1% tax.
So, can you explain just a little bit more about how that 1% tax, how or where it can be used?
It can be utilized for multiple purposes. So, say there are certain infrastructure improvements that we have to do that are within the boundaries of the business district. We can go ahead and utilize it for those purposes. If there are certain streetscape enhancements, we can do that. Economic incentives for different businesses, facade improvements. If the village wants to acquire property because we want additional parking or we want to beautify the space in a certain manner, we can go ahead and utilize those funds to do so.
But just to be clear, so the idea is that any tax or revenue generated within that business district remains in that business district. It can't be used for general purposes within the village. So, for example, if we wanted to have a facade program to help businesses along Harlem and Ogden to improve their facades, we could use money from the business district for that kind of purpose, right?
And it would have to be those specifics. So, from an accounting perspective, we take all the funds that we receive from the Harlem Avenue Business District and those are separately accounted for, any expenses that we have and also any revenue. So, that would be similar for these other two districts is you could only reinvest, even if it's on Harlem and there's business districts, those monies have to go directly to those within those specified numbers, whether it's one, two, or three.
So, why does two and three have to be broken up? Why can't it be contiguous?
You're including residential, so I guess it's a question of whether or not you want to include any residential.
But there wouldn't be any tax impact on residential? Would it be easier just to have one additional business district?
From our perspective, I mean, we broke it up based on different zoning districts and looking at where the potential for development is.
Well, that's something that could be teased out in this further analysis, right?
Right.
So, what do you think?
I have a couple of questions. So, with regard to the tax revenue, you can use that revenue to acquire property within that specific business district?
Correct.
So, if we combined it and extended it, you know, beyond the residents that weren't impacted by it, that those funds could be used to acquire property?
Residential properties.
Residential property?
I believe there is that potential.
So, by extending it down Harlem Avenue and having them connected, you theoretically, over time, have the potential of expanding and creating a much larger business district on one of our main throughways. To me, to me, I would have to no brainer.
Would you want to go up to the current district as well? You know what I mean, like?
We wouldn't be able to incorporate the existing district because we already have a plan in place.
Okay.
But we could go right up to it.
Can you remind me, and I'm sure it's somewhere, but it's been two or three years since we've had the Harlem one established, what have we done there with our funds? And maybe we're just abiding our time, but it'd be nice to provide us some context of what we can do and what we have done with these funds in the past.
Well, as you know, the village acquired 2710 South Harlem and the business district has been reimbursing the village for our capital outlay related to that. The business district also can reimburse us for, and we have it, to reimburse us for our costs associated with the original plan. our costs associated with the original plan. So there are certain things that are qualified under it, and when we draft the initial plan for the board to review before a public hearing, those are different items that are broken out of what qualifies, and you have to establish essentially a budget of what you think the items won't exceed. So acquisition of property, any type of infrastructure improvements, things of that sort. So the big one, to go back to your question, is the 2710 South Harlem.
Mr. Han? When we previously talked about the corner of Ogden and Harlem, you know, we've had discussion about Loyola's expansion and desire to move into that, and we'd just love to hear feedback on how establishing a business district would affect what we perceive as what Loyola's plan is for that property.
I don't know if it will have any impact. I mean, we're looking at long-term, the 20, these plans are for 20 years. And so if we're seeing that they're not getting those offices filled, and if how they've conducted business has changed over time, and they vacate and want to sell the building, that's where the economic development opportunity lies.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. So I take it that we would like staff to pursue this?
Yes.
Yes? Is that all you need?
Yes, thank you.
Wait, you know what? I have one more question. Would there be any, I don't know how the residents, how it would end with the residents when we tell them that we want to include their properties in the business district? I don't know if they would understand what that means. Is there, what are the pros, cons?
Would there be any, would there be any impact on residential properties and any kind of associated cost to folks in residential properties if the district included them?
We'd have to look at that. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but as part of this process, all these property owners will be notified. There'll be a public hearing. They'll have an opportunity to come and we'll be able to provide them answers to those questions before a decision's made.
And would, but wouldn't, but for a pro, wouldn't the funds from the tax incentives be able to, you said, would be able to be used to take care of the streetscape along those residential, which were once residential areas, correct?
Potentially.
Potentially. I accept that.
Residential, you don't see it too much happening with residential, but that doesn't mean it doesn't necessarily happen. I know there was one community that included residential, and they acquired some of those homes after the fact to then build parking, because there was no parking in front of those businesses. So I'd have to look more into it about beautification or resurfacing, whether or not those funds can be utilized. If I recall everything correctly, it's basically infrastructure, which includes streets, and if it's within the boundaries, I think it would qualify. But I would like to double check on that.
I'd like to echo Trustee Evans' concern about including a residential portion. I think the objective of the business district in what was originally proposed is a very pro-business idea. I would hate to see by an inclusion of residents a negative implication on what any plan would be. I think doing what we can to improve businesses and provide a nice opportunity for them to come into the village is the top priority. I agree with Trustee Jiza, that it'd be nice to be able to have the funds available should an opportunity arise to expand that district. But, you know, I'd rather take a wait-and-see approach as you do this study, but just want to express my concern.
You can't, can you expand, I think what you just, you answered this maybe indirectly earlier, but you can't expand or change the bounds of a business district once it's set?
Once the plan's adopted.
Or 20 years later, can you? Like if it's a?
Well, I think there is a procedure to.
Adjust it?
To amend the district, yes.
Okay.
So we can get to the bottom of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
As part of, when we bring it back, we can do the pros and cons, and then the board can have further discussion.
Yeah. Next up is an initial discussion of recreational cannabis. This is Francis.
The board has not discussed this matter before. On June 25th of this year, the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act was signed into law. Effective January 1, 2020, the sale of recreational cannabis will be permitted in Illinois. Over the next few months, communities will decide whether they would like to opt out as the, as allowed by the act. But opting, by opting out, communities are prohibiting recreational cannabis businesses and therefore not allowing the sale of recreational cannabis within their community. For communities that decide to permit the sale, various changes within zoning and village code should be made prior to 2020. The village has received inquiries as to whether the village will opt out from commercial real estate brokers representing cannabis dispensaries. The dispensaries will need to move quickly with location selection leases and potentially any construction required in order to open. And so this matters before the board to provide some direction. I guess the initial question that needs to be asked and at least some guidance provided is whether or not the village would like to opt out.
So let me, let me just add just a little bit to that. The, our attorneys, Plathorpe and Jackins, has provided us, and I commend us to folks upon if you're interested in this topic, a, an FAQ, a frequently asked questions about the act that goes into effect next year. So if you have questions about the details of it, I encourage you to look at this. This is part of our agenda packet this evening, so you can find it online, and it'll answer a lot of your questions. One thing that I think has surprised a lot of municipalities is the amount of discretion and leeway that municipalities have. As Manager Francis just mentioned, municipalities do have the option of opting out and not allowing the sale of marijuana within their boundaries. We also have extensive latitude by way of if we, how to regulate it if we do want to allow it with regard to zoning and permits and things like that. And those kind of details are also included in this frequently asked questions packet. So really what we're, what we need to try to talk about tonight is, is this something that we would want to consider further in terms of allowing it? This is the first discussion of this. Should the board decide that it wanted to look at this further, we could ask our attorneys to draft some draft ordinances that we would be able to discuss at our first meeting on August 1st, which would give us another chance to discuss it. If you wanted to move forward from there, that, it would then be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would then have a public hearing on this, which would be another chance for discussion, and then they would make a recommendation back to us. And then you would have, at that point, you would have the opportunity to make a final decision. So I just want to emphasize that we have several months of discussion coming up about this if the board decides this evening that they would want to look at it with more detail. So now, Trustees.
I would like to see more detail on this actually. I also wanted to know if Chief, if he has any concerns that he wants us to consider on this matter as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Chief, would you mind? Share some preliminary talks on this with us?
Sure. So it's certainly no secret that I was opposed to medical marijuana and recreational cannabis on behalf of the Illinois Chiefs Association. But we fought that battle, and the residents of Illinois decided that they wanted recreational cannabis. So actually, what we did is the Illinois Chiefs never changed their position, but we wanted the seat at the table. So we were able to get a lot of what we wanted out of that legislation, such as no home delivery, no cultivation, and medical marijuana can still do cultivation at home to some level. And we wanted some provisions for security of the buildings, which we got. If you read the question and answer that our attorneys wrote, you can see the law in there. And we got some of the drug driving provisions, with the exception of a field sobriety testing device similar to a breathalyzer, because they just don't exist right now. But we did get some funding at the federal level that they're doing testing in California. So the real issue was, after the law was signed, the Illinois Chiefs met, and, you know, it's going to be law, January 1, 2020. So I kind of look at my position as to, this board is a policy board. If the board decides to opt in, I think my role would be to advise you on certain physical security for the building, parking, traffic flow. According, when I did my literature research before, over the last week, if you look at the major concerns in California and Washington State, a lot of the concerns were traffic and parking initially. And then there were concerns about crime. And it depends on what study and who's funding it. You can search the internet yourself, and you can find studies that say crime went up in some areas and crimes went down. Dig into the weeds and see whose study, who funded those. Because, and then there was a study about property values. Actually, the property value study said that in the first several years after 2013, property values went up from people throughout the United States that wanted to move to Colorado, wanted to move to Washington, to be in states that had legal cannabis, and then it plateaued. So in 2013, it went up. There was a study that said the home values went up $6,000, but as we come closer to 2018, it's come, plateaued, but it's never fallen below what they were. And that was one of the big issues out in Colorado, is what it would do to property values. So it's lawful if we look to an organization called HIDO, which stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. They put out the reports for Colorado, Washington State on the cannabis distribution in the black market. So the black market is really a more complicated issue. People are always going to try to beat the price, all right? So the legal cannabis, whatever the price is, if somebody can beat that price, they're going to. But to be able to walk into a store and purchase legal cannabis in a setting that is aesthetically pleasing, they make these, my understanding is the display cases are almost like you're going into a jewelry store, and then they do the, they have a reception area, and they have almost like a concierge that takes you back behind. And Illinois's law did pass a lot of security measures. Not only do they have to have cameras, the store is forbidden from operating if that system goes down. They must report it to the local police. They cannot operate until the system is up. It has specs for lighting the parking lot. The organizations in Colorado, such as our organization that we here at the village, so our traffic engineer, in Colorado, the municipalities had their traffic engineers come in and work with the establishment to make sure that the traffic patterns in and out in the parking was significant or at least sufficient. Now, one thing they have there that we don't have is you can't busle. So in Washington and in Colorado, they have off-site parking, and with such a demand that they busse people in. That doesn't, Illinois doesn't have that. We don't have home delivery. So a lot of those issues that the other states dealt with was addressed in our legislation. I know it seems kind of funny for me to be up here and not take any real negative stance. I still am totally involved in drug driving and drunk driving because of my positions on two subcommittees that I hold. But for an example, when we had 130 DUI arrests in 2017, 20 of those are drugged driving. Of the 20 drugged driving arrests in 2017, 16 of them were cannabis, the other ones were heroin. So they're not all cannabis. Far, the drunk driving alcohol far outweighs, but there was some, some gains being made by drug driving. In one area that they'd also rolled in was prescription drugs with people, opioids and prescriptions. So I really view my, if the board pops in, I view my, my role to work with. Say, so say somebody does open up in Riverside, I think through our, either our special use permit or if the village decides to permit that, that we work together as a team. I was the fire department for regulations, Director App, who we already work closely with, the police, and we work with that establishment to make sure that if it's anywhere near a residential neighborhood, or I would assume probably Harlem Avenue, I don't know if the village can opt out of different districts, but if they can, and just work on parking issues, security, time of, of open. I understand we can't maybe some, have some influence on hours of operation, and just other regulations like that as far as the enforcement of the recreational cannabis. I will say that the state police have a majority of the enforcement of the establishment or the, is it the agricultural department? So then they're going, actually, they're going to be hiring enforcement officers to come, I shouldn't say enforcement, compliance officers to help regulate this. So it's new for Illinois. You can, you can bet that there's many municipalities having the same conversation, if not tonight, but in the next month. So some will opt in, some will opt out. So I, I mean, if the village drops in, I'll, I'll be available and I'll come back with more. Literature research I did now was either from the internet or from the police organizations when we testified in Springfield against making cannabis legal. My, my information came from the Illinois Chiefs Association, because you could Google some of my statements and you'd see them on there that I was opposed to it. But I view my, my position, I don't need to advise this board, our residents, but I also view it to enforce the law. And so law is cannabis is legal in 2020, well, it's my, you know, it's, it's, I'm not going to give you my personal opinion. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to, I'm here to advise you how to, how to make it a better establishment if the board goes that way.
And if I can just follow up just a little bit with regard to what I was saying earlier about the leeway that the municipalities have. So to take Chief Whistler's example, if this board wanted to limit it to the B1 area, for example, the board has the capability of doing that. If you want to make it a special use, you have the capability of doing that. And within that context, the act specifies the time from 6:00 to 10:00 as the permissible hours for these establishments, but as part of your special use review for any particular applicant, you could decide that given its location, you wanted to vary those hours. So this, the act gives us a lot of latitude in how we want to, to regulate this, and we can require the kind of things that Chief Whistler described. Mr. Han, I think you have something.
Chief, and I appreciate your insight, and obviously, the, the safety of the residents of the village are of the utmost importance. You know, as, as I look at this situation, you know, I think we have to all admit to ourselves that there's going to be a dispensary somewhere, somewhere either on the east side of Harlem, on the south side of Ogden, on the north side of 26th Street. And, you know, and listening to your comments, you know, I, the crime spike, I'm not quite sure keeping it out of Riverside, if there's something across the street on the Berwin side is going to materially affect the level of crime created by having a dispensary. And what I'm finding comfort in, you know, you and I have interacted a lot, both when I was on planning and zoning and on the board, you've really taken an active role, if there's something in the village, if there's a business in the village, making sure that they're compliant, making sure that the studies are done, and making sure that the safety of the village is paramount. And, you know, my view, and I'd love to get your view, is that if it is allowed in the village, we have more control over how it's operated. If it's, if there's a non-compliance issue, you have relationships with the State Department and can bring it to their attention. And that's where I get comfort, as opposed to something that may be in an adjacent suburb where we don't have any of that control. And I'd love to get sort of your, your feedback on that comment.
You're, you're correct. So I do believe we'd have more control. The residents of Illinois have spoken, so it is, it is going to be legal. There's no, no, I'm not, it doesn't serve a purpose for me to up, to stand up here and give you, you know, how upset I was that that happened, if that's not my role. But a good point you brought up, so if another municipality near us opens up a cannabis distribution center, we, we provide mutual aid to our neighbors all the time, and they provide mutual aid to us. So that Lyons, Berwin, Mark Riverside, Brookfield, are on the same radio frequency. So if something happens at a business, if something happens at the mall, something happens, and they need more police officers, we're constantly backing each other up. So there are times, you know, that we're going to other municipalities that may have this establishment, and, you know, we're backing them up, we're assisting them, but they're getting the benefit from that. Make no mistake, right? They have the establishment. What they're getting from us is the manpower. And vice versa, but not that, not that it's one way. When we need manpower at 2:00 in the morning, and I have a minimums working the shift, we get, we get mutual aid assistance from those communities. So you're right, we're constantly backing you up. And I, and I believe that the cannabis distribution site is going to end up in some suburbs around here.
And I guess my question was more on control over the vigilance over these things. If there's a loitering problem, if there's a parking and noise problem, you know, I would rather be able to turn to you, you know, in sort of your body of work with the village, and say, we need to address this quickly, and I am opting towards, I'd rather have it in Riverside, where you can do it on your own volition, as opposed to have to call and, and say, okay, we have this problem that's filling over in Riverside, what are we doing to address this? And have to involve another village, another police department, even though they will help them when called upon, it's that time to initiative, time to. Even though they will help when called upon, it's that time to initiative, time is a problem.
And we can enter into agreements with that establishment. We have agreements with private companies now where we can enforce parking regulations on their private property, right? They enter an agreement with the village that allows us to proactively do that. So, you know, as far as loitering, we can, we can regulate signs being posted and then we can enter an agreement with that owner of that property that when we come there, if they want somebody cited for loitering or we want to cite somebody for loitering, we can do it proactively without, without having to go into the business to get their permission to do that. That gets me comfort. Thank you, Hannah.
I have, oh, sorry.
Ms. Paul.
Thank you. So I think Trustee Hanlon hit it on target. I mean, the issue is the location of the store. I mean, it's going to be a permitted activity in Riverside.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
It's going to be a permitted activity in Riverside, no matter what, the use of cannabis. So it's whether the store is located in Riverside or in another suburb. There's also a limited number of licenses that are going to be issued. So if one does locate in another village, it most likely would preclude any opportunity the village may have for that economic development activity. I've read the legislation in regards to building security and from what I can read, these might be the safest spots in town, given all the cameras and the lighting and everything else that's required for these facilities. So yeah, I see this as an economic development issue. And what do we need to do to pursue that, that economic development opportunity? And I'd like to see us get started on a zoning process to classify these uses.
Ms. Peters?
I also see this as an economic development opportunity. I just see it the exact opposite. I don't think, many of us have talked about the Economic Development Commissions the last three or four years, what they've been going at trying to figure out what the village's unique and quantifiable values are. And what they've come up with is that this village is a destination location. It's a destination for people to come and dine and shop and walk our streets. And that involves staying in the village and creating an environment, in my mind, that doesn't, it doesn't jive with this. In my mind, selling cannabis, which can't be enjoyed on the streets, is not going to encourage the type of, the type of activities that, again, the Economic Development Commission focused on and had, you know, consultants come in and talk to them about with regard to what are the qualities that this village has. I just, I don't think it lines up with our, with the village's qualities, and I might be the only person on this board that feels that way, but I feel like this could actually discourage some of the activities that we are trying to encourage in the village. I also think that most of the locations that are probably, this is not necessarily economic development, but most of the, most locations that are going to be considered for this are going to be on Harlem, right? It's the most accessible. And we just talked about how a lot of that Harlem strip is residential, it's intermixed with residential. And so it's not just, I mean, I guess we could try to narrow it down to a business district, but I would be very concerned that it's not just, I mean, that it's selling very close to residents who may have very different opinions. It's not just in a downtown business district. So I'm concerned, from the economic development perspective, I think it's not what our village has gone after, and I would opt out on that reason alone. I have other reasons too, but that, to me, is the biggest reason.
Other comments?
I understand what Trustee Peters is saying. However, I still think we should explore leveraging this new industry in a way that's palatable to the community. So we can work on buy-in. We can, you know, get feedback on what works and what doesn't work. There are a lot of pro-community provisions in the act, like there's no drive-throughs, dispensaries can't be located within 1,500 feet of each other, within 1,000 feet of schools, playgrounds or parks, libraries or rec centers. And then we have, local governments are empowered to enact rules governing time, place, and manner of business operations. We can conduct inspections and ensure compliance with our local ordinances and establish civil penalties for ordinance and rule violations. As you mentioned, there's no smoking allowed and you can't smoke it in the cars and you can't smoke it in public places. It's very high-regulated, and I would encourage anybody who's paying attention to this to read the frequently asked questions because I learned a lot. But I do think that I would like to the board, staff and commissions to engage in a thoughtful process with community buy-in to develop, you know, code amendments and procedures that allow us to generate revenue while maintaining community health and well-being.
Thank you. Over here.
Some of the last one. So, this is a tough one to make. So, like, I personally don't want dispensaries in the town where my kids are being raised, but I also understand the concern for economic development. Having said that, I agree with Trustee Peters that it doesn't jive, use your word, with the marketing campaign that we put together last year and we spent a significant amount of money on. You know, I, when I was reading through the stuff, I took myself back to, I went to a wedding in Boulder, Colorado, and I was walking through the thing with my three-year-old daughter, and there was all these stores and people were smoking weed and sugar-take gummies or whatever they were doing. And I was like, Jesus, this place is, I hated it, right? And I was just discouraged being there with my daughter. Having said that, I think what we're talking about doing is just discussing, starting a discussion here. So, so while right now I'm leaning towards, I mean, it looks like leaning against it personally, which is very hypocritical considering I was for gaming, but I think that, you know, I can be convinced and I can be swayed if viable arguments and recommendations are put through and depending on what some of the limitations are. And some of the things that, notes that I took down from reading it were, I don't know, I guess, hold this up. You know, there's the tax rate that I think we have the ability to select, we can choose a higher one than standard. You know, can we establish a penalty or a fee for public use that can be something that's excessive? I mean, excessive to me is like $1,000, right? We already confirmed that it wouldn't be downtown. I mean, you know, violators, for store violators, can they be immediately eliminated if it's a special use? And again, I, I'm leaning the other way, which I know is hypocritical, my wife's going to kill me, but...
She has so many reasons.
But it's just, it's just not, it's not, I think that it doesn't fit what we've invested in this community downtown, the resurfacing of, is everything about it, for me, it screams polar opposite. Having said that, it's only for discussion the next, as Ben said, it's going to go on for a while. I think this is very important for all of us to discuss this and figure out this is an economic opportunity for us. If it is, then, you know, we'll go the, we'll...
Well, I would, I would, sorry, I'd like to ask, with the gaming, we took this to the Economic Development Commission, we got their insight, which they're, you know, they have experts in it. I know that this is a quick turning, turnaround timing issue, but is this something that we could put to them to get their opinion on? Because to me, this, that's, that's the key. Is this, does this good, and I know I have, you know, a bend toward economic development, but that, that's the question. Does this align with our, with the values that have been laid out in the way that our town has developed its economic, its economic identity, if you will? I just feel like that's what we need to do. I don't know what the timing, you said, like 2020, January 1st, 2020 is when they can sell, so they need to have things in place. I mean, what, what's our deadline, I guess?
From, from what I'm hearing and from other communities is they, they are out talking to other communities and seeing what direction and what path they're headed. I don't know that they've submitted any letters of intent to, for any properties. I wouldn't be surprised if they have. So I guess if this is something that there's consensus or a majority of, we would like to move down this path, I, you know, my concern is if we don't move fast enough, which in certain scenarios we haven't and we've had missed opportunities. And so that's my concern, is I don't want that to happen and then it go across the street on Harlem.
And you're saying that if that does happen because of a limited license, I haven't read the statute in detail, but basically the limits of license prevent other, a year from now, if we wanted to do this, we wouldn't have that opportunity, is what you're saying?
Right. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So the, the existing dispensaries, the ones that are already operating for medical cannabis, I'll have an opportunity to add a second site on January 1st. Okay, so those are the ones who are actively talking. Nobody else is going to be up and running until next July or June, June or July. And, but, but there's not the same type of limitations as there were for medical, so there's going to be more.
So, and the other thing that we've learned from this particular broker is that they, their existing dispensaries that they have where they have medical, they're looking at expanding to recreational on the existing site. If they can't do that, they are looking then to pull their license and go elsewhere.
Right, so they don't have to add recreational at their existing location, they have the ability to be one of these that opens January 1st somewhere other than their medical, because they've already got, you know, the infrastructure and the relationships with the cultivators and all those sorts of things.
Ms. Paul? Did you want to address this first, Mr. Galagos? Because you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
As I understand the legislation, legally, you could have one in Berwyn and one in Riverside eventually.
Yeah.
My point was more about the economy of it, the economics of it with limited licenses. I would think logically they're going to try to go to open markets where they don't have competition. So if one ends up in Berwyn, you know, it's not likely that someone wants to invest in another one a mile away.
They have to be 1,500 feet apart.
Right, but, I mean, that's small. It's not very far. Right, right, so, but, so here's my concern, is I think there's going to be three different types of responses to this legislation. It's going to be villages that opt out. There's going to be villages who aren't sure, and maybe they go through a long zoning process, they make it a special use. So if someone wants to open a business, it's going to take two months just to go through the zoning process. And then there's going to be villages that are going to be very aggressive in seeking these out because the revenue is, is a game changer. It's substantial revenue for, for one store. If you're in that middle category, you might as well be opting out, I think, because you're not going to get one. Because the ones who are going to be aggressive are going to grab them up and, and the businesses aren't going to want to go to a place where they have to go through a long zoning process there, because there's going to be opportunities for them to go places where they're going to be welcomed and maybe even incentivized to go there. So I think that's something you need to think about and, and, you know, if we want to opt out, if we, I guess what I'm saying is if we don't want to be aggressive about getting it, then we might as well opt out because I don't think it'll matter.
I understand.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I really think Trustee Peters made some great points, and I think that's why I'm in favor of moving on with the discussion because it is a fine balance. You know, is it consistent with the economic development? I go back to, it's going to be somewhere, and I find a lot of comfort knowing that we can, if we go the special use route, if we go to a vigilant enforcement route, at least the village is controlling it. If it's something across the street, wherever it is, it's not something we are in the driver's seat controlling. So, you know, I was listening to your comments and I go to the analogy of Lalo's. The number of times my wife and I, you know, walk through the village, go to Lalo's and come back. You know, if there's a dispensary next door, does it really affect whether I'm in Riverside or not, if people go into the dispensary and walking back into Riverside, does that affect the economic development as well? And that's where I get hung up on how much are we trying to protect with economic development because likely it's going to be on our borders somewhere. So I think that gets put in the mix, but I think there's been enough raised where I think it's worthy of a future discussion and I'm happy we're ahead of the curve in raising this and getting to a resolution quickly because it is going to start to cascade as January 1st becomes closer.
I, yeah, so let's definitely have a discussion, this is my opinion. But one thing I think I disagree with, with Doug and Adam is, is that, you know, being first isn't always best, right? I think that there's, you go to New York City or you go to Boulder, Colorado, there's 100 different, there's 100 Indian restaurants in one street, right? I think there's going to be a lot of dispensaries. I think that if anything, we're going to want to try to be selective on who we choose. And if we're talking about having a lot of restrictions in this and being vigilant, then the ones that are lower level hopefully won't want to come to Riverside. I just think that while we want to fast-track it, of course, but I also think we need to do this intelligently and talk through this and it sounds like all of us have very well-thought-out opinions of this, so.
Ms. Gans?
I'm in favor of continuing discussion on this. I'd like to see what planning and zoning can come up with so we can review what suggestions they would have.
So we're going to need a little bit more from you than that. So it seems like there's consensus that we want to consider it. What about location? Would you, I think I'm hearing a consensus that we would want to limit this to the B1 area.
I think we need to hear from the planning commission before we weigh in on that.
And the economic development, right?
And economic development, sure. And, I mean, I, I would like to make a motion if it's appropriate at this time. I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the planning commission to schedule a public hearing to start considering zoning.
What do you think's the most efficient way? Do you think it's better for it to come back to us with some kind of draft ordinance and then, because they're not going to be able to get to it until their August meeting anyway.
EDC doesn't meet again till September. EDC doesn't meet till September, too.
Well, going back to PZ, so the, if they're not going to be able to get to it till August, that would at least give us an opportunity, another opportunity to discuss it among ourselves at our first meeting in August with more resident input. Because I, my hope is, now that we're talking about it, because to be honest, we haven't heard a lot from the residents.
Yeah, two emails.
You know, I mean, it hasn't been, to your point, it hasn't been like the, the volume that we got with regard to gambling. So hopefully this will spark, you know, a broader discussion. So I'd like to see it come back to us on August 1st, and Mr. Bars can have something for us to look at, so we would have a little bit more meat on the bones for this with regard to, you know, the B1 area in particular, which I think is what I'm seeing most people want. Is that satisfactory to everyone? Yes?
I would rather get the legal process started.
But my point is, it can't start. It can't start until August anyway because we have to post for the public hearing.
When's the next planning and zoning commission meeting?
The year?
Wednesday.
After that.
August 28th.
So even if...
So if we wait till our first meeting, which is what, August 1st, will there be time to publish a legal notice for the August 28th plan? So there will be time to publish a legal notice for the next planning commission meeting, even if we talk about this again at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm okay with that. I just don't want to miss an opportunity.
I understand.
And delay it for two, two to four weeks.
President Sells, I think that that's a great approach. I think hearing from the residents at that August meeting is going to be critical and would welcome anyone who wants to learn more or want to voice an opinion to come to that. But I'd also urge that as part of preparing for that meeting, in addition to getting the input from the attorneys and sort of just looking at, if we do do that Harlem Avenue District of the B2, you know, potential sites that it could go into, given all the restrictions that they have and with sensitivity to where part of that business district abuts residential. But also would like to see, you know, if there are economic projections or at least some studies to put a number on what we're talking about. Because I know when we were discussing, you know, where, you know, capital improvements, police pension, you know, there's a lot of immediate needs of the village, and it'd be nice to know, to quantify, you know, what that number is. Are we, you know, are we talking a, you know, new, new... know, what that number is. Are we, you know, are we talking a, you know, new building for the fire and police? Are we talking about fully funding this police pension fund? Are we talking about paving a street? It'd be nice to have that perspective as well.
I would ask again that we have the Economic Development Commission weigh in on this. I mean, this is, this discussion has only solidified my understanding that that needs to happen. If we need to do a special meeting, that's fine, but something, we need their input as well. Can't just be planning zoning.
I think that would warrant a special meeting.
Yep.
Mr. Mars?
I just wanted to clarify one point. Trustee Evans, you mentioned, and then Trustee Hanen followed up about the distance limitation. So the only real distance limitations on recreational cannabis is that 1,500 feet from another dispensary. It's medical cannabis that is limited with that 1,000 feet from daycare, schools, parks, et cetera. But you were given the opportunity under this to do something similar to what they call sensitive uses. You can put distance requirements in. So that's another subject we're going to have to tackle, but that's not preordained. So one thing we might want to have at the next meeting is, you know, some of those things in proximity to the B1, so we can kind of play with those distances or whatever.
I mean, one kind of component here, I think, is kind of perhaps a gorilla in the room, is there's no question that this has the possibility for generating revenue for the village. With regard to the taxing of it, according to the act, municipalities are allowed to tax the purchase price up to 3% in .25% increments. So we could go anywhere from .25% all the way up to 3%. We have had, we've already had folks approach us about this potential. One person shared with us, who currently has a medical marijuana dispensary, they do $2 million a year in medical dispensing. Their estimate is they would do up to $10 million a year when they add recreational use. So if we were to tax at the maximum of 3%, you would be looking anywhere from $3 to $5,000 a year.
Per year?
That's per year. So that gives you some idea of, now granted, that, as Chief Wiesel said, I think everybody is expecting one of these where it goes up, plateaus, and then finally finds its own, finally settles at its own level. But that, at least, that's some of the preliminary figures that we've received. Granted, from people who want to do it. So take it with a grain of salt, their revenue projections. So.
Yeah. My point here tonight really is to move fast so that we can be prepared to grab it if we decide we want it. I mean, it could very well be that the community doesn't want this, and that's fine. Or we're convinced that it is, does hurt our brand. I tend to think it probably won't hurt our brand, or, but I'll remain open-minded about that. What I don't want is to us to drag along and suddenly say, "Yes, this is something we want," and then we say, "Oh, we're too late. Berwin's got one. We missed it."
But Doug, I think what Liz said was, not, she didn't say it was going to hurt our brand. She said it wasn't going to be consistent with the brand that's been created. We took different, right?
Sure. Okay. I think we've got our answer. That enough for you, Mr. Mars? We have no new business. We do have an executive session this evening to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village, and to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the village. And ask for a motion to adjourn, not to reconvene, no final action. So moved by Mr. Galagos, second by Mr. Jeez. So please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Peter.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.